We're just gonna wait on a few more people, if that's okay.
Joe, this is John. I can't tell from my screen how many commission members are there right now.
I just have Commissioner Freiberger and Commissioner Frenette. There's only three of us in total.
But we do have a quorum because we have-
Yeah, 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 we're good.
And there are two online.
Okay, that's right, okay, we're good. No, we still got a couple minutes, let me just gear up here. John, can you see us?
Um-
We can see you, but I guess we don't have a camera on us, I think we should.
We do, just small on my screen, so it's hard to tell.
And Joe, they should be displayed up on the screen above you.
I can see Commissioner Cock and John.
Okay, those are the ones that have video.
I have Commissioner Johnson as a guest with no video and no audio. And Bill, I see you with no video. Okay, Eric is on, I believe.
We presume that's our Commissioner Eric Johnson and not another Eric Johnson.
Yep, I'm here.
You know, that's, hmm.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, yes.
Okay, I'm on a different laptop than I normally am, so I'm not, I'm kinda working with different technology here, but good to know, okay?
No video for you today?
Nope.
How about I just give it another two minutes to see if Commissioner Huggins and Commissioner Maddox will be here? John, did anyone call you to see if we were, if they wouldn't be here?
Let me check. I do not have any emails or phone calls from commission members or public. That's a good question for Nicole though, as well.
I haven't received any either.
We'll give it one more minute and then we'll stand for the pledge. Okay, is everyone ready? Bill, are we recording?
Yes, you're recording.
Okay, will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America-
The United States of America.
To the republic-
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation-
One nation-
Under God-
Indivisible-
Just as-
With liberty and justice-
For all. So, I heard that. We will call to order the March 21st, 2023 Planning Commission meeting at 6:31 PM. Roll call, Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Commissioner Cock.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson. Present.
Present.
Commissioner Frenette.
Present.
Commissioner Maddox, absent. Commissioner Fatizzi, present, and Commissioner Huggins, absent. So, moving on, has everyone had the opportunity to look at the minutes from the February 21st, 2023 meeting? And are there any comments?
Yes.
Go ahead. Commissioner Frenette, go ahead.
Me?
Yeah. Oh. I thought you said you had, uh-
Oh, I was answering, yes, I read it.
Oh, okay.
I have just extremely minor corrections to make.
Okay.
If we care to.
We always do.
Midway through the third paragraph, the paragraph that starts with the commissioners began a long discussion. Halfway down, or two-thirds, it says- Oh, here it is. It says, intent of work-live units should, more specifically state units, should only be inhabited by A owner. I don't know if it's A or Ann, but it doesn't matter. Or manager of the associated business and their, is spelled wrong, the their family.
Should be an owner.
So, two little minor ones on that sentence.
Do you have a city council meeting here, or, uh-
It's a Planning Commission meeting.
Did they have another one somewhere else for another city meeting somewhere here?
Not in the city of Seidrow-Wooly, I don't believe, no.
At the library, or?
I'm not aware of any other activity happening here, at least.
If you were thinking of the galvanizing meeting, that was at 10:00 AM this morning.
What was it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I should remember the person that told me about it, it would be at least nine o'clock.
Sorry.
Thank you.
When did your meeting here start?
It's on right now. If you'd like to take a seat?
We just started.
Feel welcome.
Is it a lonely place?
Maybe not.
How long does it go?
Potentially an hour or two.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Okay, have a great day, thank you. Okay, so Nicole, do you have those two little minor revisions?
Yeah, that's all I saw.
And I also had-
Okay.
In the following paragraph there.
Which, in the same one?
Yes, in that, in that public hearing section, yeah, so it would be the fourth paragraph there, the last paragraph of that section. The discussion transitioned, it says transitions, very minor.
I see it.
Into the difference between mixed use and-
Good one, I saw something wrong, I couldn't figure it out.
Outside of those two minor changes, is there anything else anyone has to add? I guess not. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minutes from February 21st, 2023? With those two minor adjustments? Do I have a first?
I still move.
Okay, Commissioner Freiberger has a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Johnson. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, so we have one, two, three, four, five, four, zero opposed. Motion carries with those minor amendments. So, moving on to the general public comments section. Prior to opening the general public comments section, if anyone wishes to speak, please limit comments to three minutes or less. Comments may also be submitted via email or mail ahead of the, ahead of the public comments section and read into the record. The instruction to submit comments are published prior to Planning Commission meetings on the monthly Planning Commission agenda. So, at 6:36 PM, I would like to open the public comments section. And at this particular point, do we have any emails or mail to be read into the record?
We do not.
We do not. Do we have any audience members we had on wishing to speak? We do not. Do we have any online members? I'm sorry. Do we have any online members?
Yes, I'm online, I would like to speak. Scarlett Ponder from the RJ Group.
Okay, Scarlett, this is the general public comments, not the, not the public hearing on the live-to-work discussion, that's coming up next.
Got it, okay, I will wait, thank you.
Okay, I think that's what you meant, right?
Yes, correct, thanks.
So, since we have no general public comments, I will close the general public comments section at 6:37 PM. Moving on to the public hearing. Possible amendments to Chapter 17 dot 04 SWMC to add a definition of work-live unit. And amendments to Chapter 17 dot 20 and 17 dot 28 SWMC to specify parking requirements for work-live units. Prior to opening the public hearing. Planner McGowan or Coleman, would you like to introduce this following section?
I'll take the floor.
There you go.
Okay, so, this is the fourth time around that we have seen these work-live amendments. We're now going by work-live instead of live-work, so please bear with me, I will try to do my best to reflect that. So, we've held two public hearings on this, one at the January 17th and one at the February 21st meetings. We heard some public, or some comment from the RJ Group. They are interested in developing work-live units. So, it was very useful to hear from them, kinda what they're hoping for, for these. So, considering those and considering all things that was, that were discussed during those public hearings. We had some pretty good discussion at February 21st meeting, so there were, you know, a lot of, a lot of things we went over. Just trying to make sure that these amendments would work to eliminate the possibility of the business portion of the work-live units from reverting to residential use. We also talked about whether work-work-live units should remain a permitted use in mixed commercial zone. There was concern that there might be potential for undermining the commercial intent of the mixed commercial zone by allowing work-live units, you know, they're much more difficult to regulate than what we already have. The mixed-use buildings that kind of serve the same purpose. So, the Planning Commission requested some specific edits to the amendments to make sure that we were managing the business portion of these, in a way that it would eliminate the ability for these to be reverting to purely residential use. So, those are reflected in these amendments here. So, some of the, some of the changes I made, we removed the option for locating the residential portion of the work-live unit to be behind the business portion, so that would ensure that the separation between the two uses is very clear. And ensures that, at the pedestrian level, the use is primarily for business activity. You know, utilizing that space to the best of the ability. We also clarified ingress and egress requirements for physical separation between the business and residential portions of the unit. You'll see some language in there that says, "All residential features must be designed and arranged to be separated from the business portion of the unit by a physical divider, such as walls and a lockable door." "The intent of that condition is to clearly distinguish the separation of the residential portion of the unit from the business portion." We also required that the owner of the associated business, we changed that from the occupant. Specifically, it must be the owner. "The owner of the associated business must reside in the residential portion of the work-live unit." And that's to prevent employee housing opportunity in work-live units, because that's not their intended use, as we were discussing last time. We also clarified that office use is specifically permitted in the business portion of a work-live unit. As it stands in the industrial zone, we are, we do allow office parks in the industrial zone. So, we wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that is an option for permitted uses in live-work units, or work-live units, sorry. We clarified that a garage associated with a work-live unit shall count toward the square footage allowance for the residential portion of the unit, and specifying that it cannot be used for storage accessory to the business portion. And then, the last and maybe most major change that we made was removing work-live-work units from the list of permitted uses in the mixed commercial zone. We felt that mixed-use buildings, as they're already permitted in the mixed commercial zone, kinda achieve the same general purpose as a work-live unit does. Mixed-use buildings are already carefully regulated in the city, and allowing these units, work-live units, in addition to mixed use kinda provides more opportunity for residential use in the mixed commercial zone. Just kinda problematic because the mixed commercial zone is intended primarily for commercial use. And staff found that work-live units are better suited in the industrial zone, kind of as a practical buffer between industrial and residential zone properties. So, you'll see in the amendments that we've just removed them. So, other than that, just some simple language changes.
Okay.
But, yeah, you can go over. I also included, you guys wanted to see some regulations from Bellevue and Sumner. I was not able to find any regulations from Kirkland in their municipal code, so those are not attached. But I have attached the ones from Sumner and Bellevue, and put some little notes in there of my own to kinda guide ease understand, ease of understanding, so.
You know, Sumner looks like they really went to a fairly significant level of definitions and uses when it came to that particular classification to me, but anyway, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, John, is there anything else that you would like to add? Okay, we will open the public hearing at 6:44. Again, to possible amendments to Chapter 17 dot 04 SWMC to add a definition for a live-work unit and amendments to Chapter 17 dot 20 and 17 dot 28 SWMC to specify parking requirements for live-work units. If you would like to speak, please state your name and address, or any group or organization you represent. So, again, we will open at 6:44, and at this time, do we have any emails or mail to be read into the record?
We do not.
Okay. Do we have any audience members? We do not. So, at this particular time, do we have any online audience members? And Scarlett, this would be your time to introduce yourself, I believe.
Hi, yes, thank you. I am Scarlett Ponder, I represent the RJ Group. So, yeah, I reviewed the updated amendments. I know RJ Group has made some comments generally, so I won't repeat any of the comments I made in previous meetings. But I did wanna say, overall, the changes that have been made since then, we do appreciate the additional specificity that was added about the PUD metering. Also, even though we did object to the concept of having to sign, having owners sign an agreement with the planning department. I, I do understand why that was left in, and I appreciate that there was additional detail given regarding how that would work with recording of the document. Just, again, where there's more specificity for us, that is better, so. And then, yeah, just also, we like that there's language in there clarifying what you want to see in terms of storefront doors and windows. And also, I appreciate that, one of our comments was that we did think there should be facilities allowed, such as shower, sink, et cetera, where, you know, it would be used by a business. So, we are happy to see that that change was made to allow those uses for business use. And I guess, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask a question, I, I don't know if I missed it, the, the language about allowing a garage for residential that would not be used for storage use? Or perhaps I misheard Nicole, but if it's possible to clarify that, I would appreciate, I was, I, maybe I missed it, I was looking through here, but, um, but, yeah, other than that, that's, uh, that sums up the comments from the RJ Group. And I just wanna say thank you also for, I appreciate the planning department communicating with us. We do still have an interest in this product sometime in the future. So, again, we're, appreciate the opportunity to be able to continue to be updated and participate in this process with adopting these amendments, so, thank you.
Thank you, Scarlett. Is there anyone else online that is, that I can't see here on the phone, or anything else, before I close the public hearing? Okay, go once, twice. Public hearing will be closed at 6:47 PM. And at this time, we're gonna go to a discussion on our Planning Commission here, so I'll start left to right this time. Commissioner Freiberger.
Well, first, a point of clarification. The January 17th Planning Commission meeting was not formally a public hearing on this topic. It, we did hear, or take comments from the applicant, but it wasn't a formal public hearing. So, just wanted to make that note.
That's true, thank you.
So, let me get my notes here. I really liked what, how, how this was reworked. A point of possible clarification on page three, which is part of attachment one there. In the very first part of that definition for work-live unit. Since we are trying to clarify the business owner versus the property owner. It might be useful, I'm suggesting that we add that language in there to say, work-live unit means a unit in which a residential use is located above business use within the same building and is reserved for and regularly used by the business owner. Just adding business behind that, just, I know item number nine does make it pretty clear. It has to be the business owner, not the property owner, but, and then if we also added that to the second sentence there. Again, the primary intent of a work-live unit is to provide a working business space for the business owner with a residence as a secondary use.
It's a simple change, I can make that, yeah.
And then, for item number two, I do believe we did discuss this, but just wanted to kind of bring it up again. I know the focus is on the business side of things versus the residential. But limiting the business portion of the unit to 50%, it seems like it would make more sense to limit the residential portion, and the business could be greater. But if we've already clarified this, then forgive me a fine.
So, to have it read, instead, the residential portion of the unit shall not exceed 50% of the area of the entire work-live unit?
Seems like it, it makes more sense to limit the residential side of things versus the business, but I-
Yeah, I had some questions about that myself, because the mixed commercial we're leaving alone, and it pertains to the industrial use, and I looked at that as well, yeah. Because basically, we have a 300 minimum and a 1,500 foot maximum that can't exceed 50% of the building. So, if you reverse that, and we go down into the industrial permitted uses, it seems like a UVMU kinda hybrid there. Because we're not limiting anything, I mean, for instance, we can have a 300 square foot office and a 2,500 square foot residence.
Precisely.
Yeah, yeah, I looked at that earlier on. I thought, I thought it was something that we did not want to do that. So, I think we do have that backwards, yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, we can talk about that a little bit more later on. So, I'm gonna go to our commissioners online, I'm sorry, are you done?
Uh, not quite. Just kind of going off of the-
Apologize.
On item number nine, then kind of going off that same thing. Maximum size of the business portion of the unit shall not exceed 1,500 square feet. Now, if we do change the 50% requirement to residential in item number two, then that will affect this. So, just kind of making a comment on that, because if the, that would make the residential unit, say, say the commercial unit is the maximum allowed, 1,500 square feet, then the residential unit could be no bigger than 1,500 square feet. And I know we are trying to keep them smaller, so perhaps that's, that's what we're looking for. But that also may have been why we had that 50% reversed in item two, so just wanted to-
Is, is, is 1,500 a bit small, say, for a family business on the residential side?
You know, 1,500, 1,500 square feet, we were always using the council chambers as dimensions, where we figured this is approximately 2,000 square feet where we're sitting here. So, 1,500 square feet is a decent size commercial space. And 1,500 square feet on a residential side, you can get a four-bedroom in a 1,500 square foot space. But we're including the garage, I believe, into that residential calculation. So, if you have that residential, that, that, that part of the residential calculation not to exceed 1,500 square feet, you could easily have 600 square feet of garage space, or, or thereabouts. So, it would depend on how someone on the development side would like to configure that kinda scenario. And you just don't know until somebody brings a plan in, and this is what they'd like to do. But those are the baselines, I believe, that we're just trying to accommodate more on the business side and less on the residential side. That was my comment about, it looked like a hybrid UVMU, since we didn't have anything in the industrial zone. Even though I appreciate the buffering end of it, but we don't want it to be something that we're not intending it to be, I guess, at the end of the day. Continue.
So, so basically, that was it. So, if we left item number two to say, to limit the business versus the residential, item number nine does still place a limit on how big the residential can go, since there is a maximum size on the business side of things. So, I still think it makes sense to kind of limit it into, and, and switch that around and say residential, but-
Yeah, let's go, I'm, I'm gonna agree more with that. So, Commissioner Cock, let's go on to you now. Go ahead.
Yeah, I get, I may have missed something, but the other municipalities, were, are they using this work-live-live-work more as a buffer to industrial more than anything? Or was there anything else they were attempting to solve or address? Maybe Nicole knows.
So, it looks like both Sumner and Bellevue use these, let's see.
Which one are you at, Sumner or Bellevue?
I'm looking at Sumner right now. So, so Sumner has, they call it the innovation district and enterprise area, or IDEA. It's an overlay over commercial and industrial zones. So, it's, it's not so much a buffer, but it's in a very specific overlay zone, kinda like how we have our UVMU.
Mm-hmm, sure.
So, their intention was to have something that would be helpful for incubator businesses, or startup businesses, things like that. Kinda to create a little neighborhood feel at the same time. So, those are for commercial and, what did I say? Commercial and industrial zones specifically. And then, they also allow them in planned mixed-use developments, kind of a similar idea, where it's a very specific type of development that these are allowed in. So, PMUDs are allowed in neighborhood commercial and general commercial districts, and they're allowed outright. So, it's not so much of a, of a buffer for Sumner, it's just very, very in-specific types of developments that they're allowed in. As for Bellevue. It's similar way, so they, they don't use it as a buffer so much as they specify what kind of- kind of businesses you can have in the live-work space in certain zones.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, so they're saying nonprofit arts/cultural uses include art, education, rehearsal, and performance art production, and artist's live-work space. And those are allowed in the general commercial, let me see, so MO is a medical office, OR is office residential, RC is the residential-commercial, CR is commercial-residential, and then the R is residential. So I think, if I'm understanding that correctly-
Kind of means anything too when you're talking art, like art to one person can be totally different to somebody else. It's kind of a-
Right.
-generalized kind of use.
Yeah, so it's pretty specific there for what kind of business you can have. And then, let's see. Yeah, and then they just kind of, I was able to talk with one of the planners from Bellevue, and they were saying that the live-work units, the primary intention for allowing those was to bring life to paths with multiple entrances and meaningful transparency along building frontage.
I saw that.
An aesthetic thing.
I liked the way you did that on the left-hand side, that, because you start reading this stuff and it can get a little bit confusing.
It does get confusing, so I wanted to try to guide this a little bit.
Just one quick comment, and this is back to what Commissioner Freiburger said earlier. And we're, we're looking at a square footage max-minimum, where if you look at what they did down in Sumner, they have their residential units provided that residential uses are limited to 50% of the total floor area. Very, very different calculation when you're looking at floor area, floor area ratios versus a square footage min-max. So I'm, I'm in favor of keeping the square footage, that's myself, instead of a floor area ratio, because, or a total floor area could be way, way bigger in so many different respects. So Commissioner Cock, we, okay, Commissioner Cock, on to you.
Yeah, I just, I just wondered if, you know, we get back to the original question, if this solves any problems for Seidra Woolley that a mixed commercial doesn't already address? That was my only real question about this.
Well, I think when, it was actually Commissioner Huggins that was bringing up the transitional zone in between the true industrial, you know, types of uses that you would see in a typical industrial zone where using that same zone to buffer it between pure residential areas where you're now allowing this mix. So the devil is kind of in the details right now in figuring out what that allotment should be as far as residential square footage versus actual business square footage, right? That, that kind of makes sense to do, do from the one area to the other if, if that's what we're looking to do, which is, I believe that, that is what we're really gonna do.
Okay, well, I'm okay with it as, you know, the, the buffer approach. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Johnson, on to you.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, a lot of what I was gonna bring up, Commissioner Freiburger has also already brought up. So I guess, just to keep things simple, I'd be seconding what she was talking about, you know. And I think it goes towards the whole making sure that this is business-oriented first, residential second. You know, I think that we definitely need to keep it the square footage. I, I like it that way and, and, and definitely want to keep it more of a, a buffer zone, a buffer usage than, than actual separate type of zoning. But, I mean, I, I don't have a whole lot more to add beyond that. I mean, the additions and the corrections are, are pretty good in my opinion. I think it helped clean things up a bit.
Okay, appreciate that. And I would agree too. Commissioner Frenette, on to you.
So, I agree that if this is work-live, that a 300 square foot work area is a bit out of line. It was 250 square feet when we started. So that, to me, sounds like we gotta flip-flop the whole thing. So I'm in favor with changing that. And then I was gonna mention on the egress-ingress.
With which specifically are you looking at on the, are we looking at attachment one administrative provisions and the definitions, or I think you're looking somewhere else on the-
The definitions.
Okay, which number?
I'm looking.
Thank you.
I guess number five.
That's it. Access shall be provided, number five, to the residential portion of the work-live unit through the business portion. And then it goes on, kind of wordy, this condition is not intended to, you know, do this or that. I was just thinking that we could shorten it way up to one sentence of like, and any other entrance or exit from the building, from the residential building.
Say that again.
Well, it says, this condition is not intended to place a limit on one means of ingress-egress between the business and the residential portion of the business, you know, multiple means of, you know, it goes on and on. I was just gonna say you could shorten it all up by saying, or you could have another entrance.
Or other entrances.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Because it could be a couple of different ways of getting in. Nicole, right, that, that's pretty minor.
Unless it's there for a reason, I just, I couldn't understand.
I just wanted to make sure people understood that it was, you know, you don't need, you're not limited to the one. So-
Right.
And you're being specific. Specificity is a good thing in this business, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to be very plain and simple. So, but got a little wordy in the, in the-
We could say something along the lines of this condition does not preclude additional means of ingress-egress.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Something to the point.
Can you repeat that one more time?
This condition does not preclude additional means of ingress-egress.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
There's more. So we did away with living behind. We have to live above. Is that, are we all in agreement there? Yet, we have to separate with walls. Wouldn't it be ceilings? But anyway, it's beside the point.
We were thinking on that as well, but thinking, you know, sometimes they've got the stairways going up and you want to make sure people entering the business aren't just gonna waltz up the stairs to the residential portion. So maybe just a wall separating-
Okay.
That could happen, really, when you think about it.
Yeah, okay, understand that. I also, after reading through the other descriptions of live-work units in other cities, it seems like ours is a lot more difficult, where the other ones just say, this is it and go for it, where we have a lot of rules to follow. And I don't know if we want to keep it that way. Maybe that's a good thing, but the other one seemed a lot simpler, which was half the reason why we asked for them to see how they did it.
Well, I, I think in, in this particular case, okay, we're, we're talking about specifically the mixed commercial where we already have, you know, governing regulations for any type of business in that zone. But we're talking about the industrial, right? So I think the things that we're putting in here are still compliant with activities on the permitted use side in the industrial zone. Granted, we're trying to provide this transitional potential for someone in between them. And if you actually start looking at our, our zoning map, there's just not a whole heck of a lot of places I can even think of outside of maybe where the old auto dealership was, where there's some significant, but that's still mixed commercial there. So I'm just trying to think between railroad tracks and the only place I could think of is right here by the high school. That's our only other kind of industrial zone on that 25 acres back there. So even though we're putting it in there, I, I don't see how it's gonna really take away from people wanting to do other things. Or is there something specific on a use that you're, you're thinking about?
No, I just, it just seems like we have 22, 22 items to discuss, and they just seem to, they seem to go around and around and around where we could just say, let's just get rid of half of it and copy somebody else. But, you know, we did all this work, we might as well keep it. But I just wanted to bring it up, just so it's on the record, that if becomes, sometimes too many rules make it next to impossible.
You know, guessing at what somebody's gonna want to do until they actually want to do it is, is just as difficult as well, right? I mean-
Yeah.
And, and things evolve, you know, business-wise, business structure-wise, you know, you just don't know what's coming at you. And we always have the ability to go in and-
Same thing with the ADUs. We have a long list of regulations.
Yeah, you're right. I remember that. And that went on and on.
And people still do them.
Yeah, okay. Well, maybe, maybe this is a good thing. But also, last thing on my note was, did we ever get back to Scarlett's question about the garage? Was, is that clarified?
It is, yeah. The, the way I read it, we're gonna calculate, that'll be incorporated into the residential calculation of the overall formula.
Yeah, basically, the intent there is to keep the storage for the business out of the garage for the person who's gonna use that for their residential space, park their car in there. Because otherwise, you get people who are like, oh, okay, so I have this garage, but I'm using it for storage. Now I need a real garage for my car, and here's my next garage, you know? It's just to try to keep the uses to what they're intended to be.
Okay.
And, and for clarification, Scarlett, that was item number 12 in the list.
Yeah.
You know, if the planning commission wants, that right now, the way we've written the, the garage language is, the garage space counts towards the amount of allowed residential space. Now, that was done, was written the way it was to be clear that the garage will be part of the residential facility, you know, so it's for the, the personal vehicle of whomever is living upstairs. And we wanted to say it was part of the residential because we wanted to be clear that it can't be used as, you know, storage space.
What about a delivery van? Would that be allowed? It's part of the business.
Yeah, so that, that's a good point. Like, first of all, do we want to, you know, just give, say that, you know, the, the garage is part, is part of the residential use, but not count towards the square footage? And then second, do we want to even say that it's part of the residential use in case the business wants to use it for, you know, their van, or say they're a plumber and they keep their supplies in there? We've been, Nicole and I have been kicking around this garage concept a little bit, and I, we wanted to throw it back to the planning commission to get your take on it, because we're, we're not entirely sold on the language that we've come up with.
You know, I'm in favor of taking it out completely, that the garage doesn't count towards the residential or the commercial, you know, unless we want to limit uses of that space, that it needs to be for ve, motor vehicles only, or transportation vehicles only. But we don't want to use it as a, you know, a storage facility like a warehouse for inventory or anything like that. So as long as there's a vehicle in it and it's used for vehicles, whether a plumber puts supplies inside the truck or whatever, you know, that, that's what they're gonna need for their day-to-day, conducting their business anyway. But just take that out, I mean.
Condition number 10 already says that you can't have storage unless it's up to 10% for accessory for the, for the commercial. So I think, if we took it out, I think it would be okay.
I, I like taking it out because people are too cramped for space. They'll be really tempted to use that garage.
Right, right. It, it, it doesn't count towards livable space in, in real estate classifications anyway. I mean, you know, if you're selling a property, it says, hey, is there a garage, yes or no? But it does not count towards the space of the square footage of the actual living quarters.
So it would be a separate entity altogether?
Yeah, yeah. And it just doesn't count on either side. We're not looking to put those kinds of limitations anyway, because if you want a big garage, got three or four cars you need to park, why would you want to take that away from potentially, you know, additional business square footage?
I agree that it's supporting the business use to not limit it like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Frenette, are we, do you have anything else, Ted?
I thought it's something else while we were talking. What was it? Oh, I know what it was. The, the two-meter thing. Commercial rates and residential rates? Wouldn't somebody just run a garden hose from their upstairs down to, using their basement to the business?
We're not cops for the units.
Why, why would we have two-
Fill the old hot tub off at a residential-
Why would we have two meters when you could just have one?
The reason for that is we have different fees associated with commercial versus residential. So commercial's based on fixture units, residential is a set fee.
Yeah.
So it's just for permitting, kind of.
Yeah, but that makes sense too, because, because it is different. And this is the industrial zone we're talking about. So, you, and that, that's not gonna cause any major cost on to anyone. And it's gonna be really clear at the permitting process as to what's going where. So anything, it's another piece that says that what they're doing is compliant, and it's gonna be legitimate as to what we're trying to accomplish here. So, okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. So all I'm gonna do is summarize. This was all great commentary, and I don't think we really came across anything outside of flipping the commercial versus the residential. And that's back to that 50% of the building should not exceed 1,500 square feet on a residential side. So you'd still have a 50/50 at the end of the day, right? But you can have a smaller business side. But the residential side, if that's what we were saying, right? Go ahead.
Just changing it from saying the business to the residential there so that it limits the residential, yeah.
To 1,500, yeah.
Okay. So those changes would be made to the condition number two. So the residential portion of the unit shall not exceed 50% of the area of the entire live-work unit, or work-live unit.
And then you're down at number nine as well.
And then eight and nine.
Eight and nine, yeah.
Okay. Minimum size of the residential portion of the unit shall not be less than 300 square feet, and the maximum size of the residential portion of the unit shall not exceed 1,500 square feet.
Yeah, I thought that was backwards when I, when I, I think that was my comment a couple of weeks ago, too, a month ago.
Is that also what you were saying, Joe, about the 300, and said it was-
Yeah, well, originally, it was 250 square feet, and we were all laughing at, how could you run a business in 250 square feet? And it was like a, a way just to build a house in the industrial zone to have a, something out front there, yeah.
And again, this is the industrial zone, because the mixed commercial already has enough of, you know, latitude for residential as well as businesses. And that's why, I realized why you struck all that stuff out, because it didn't make sense, because it was already in there.
Okay, and we're taking out the garage one entirely. Changing to business owner in the definition.
So is everyone okay on the parking requirements? Any comments on that? All we did was basically add in what we would do for our regular residential zones, anyway.
Scarlett's hand is up.
Oh, well, our public comment is closed, so this is our time.
Do we need four more bedrooms in a 1,500 square foot house? Do we need four more bedrooms in a 1,500 square foot house?
Just kind of a comment, but I'm looking at it again on item number six. One thing I did notice, I believe it was in Sumner's regulations, he did actually call out, and I believe one of our commissioners had made a comment last time about family of the business owner. So we could, I mean, I'm fine with it as is, but could add for clarification in number six, the residential portion of the unit must be inhabited by the owner of the associated, well--
Let's put it out.
Of the associated business and their family, of course, then it sounds like it must be inhabited by them, so maybe that doesn't, maybe that wording doesn't really work with that.
That's what you're trying to say, though.
Just a thought.
How did they word it, Sumner's?
Does it need to change to something like, must be inhabited by the owner? Or the owner and their family?
That's a tough definition these days, because it's all over the place. Washington state defines family in a very generalized basis. I mean, some people--
That's actually a good point. Like, I don't know if we should be throwing family in there.
I wanna take that out.
It just should, it should just be implied that, you know, the owner's family couldn't be there.
I would love to take family out of all our code, quite frankly, and just--
I, I would argue against adding family, because you, you kinda look at it two different ways. If you just leave it as the business owner, you know, legally speaking, the reasonable man test would be, yeah, the owner and his family. I mean, there's no other laws on the books that would say only one person can occupy something and not their family. But if you add in family, then that muddies the issue and creates more, more of a convoluted situation, and then you could interpret it as, you know, well, he, he's letting his son that just dropped out of college to live there, because he needs this place to stay, and so that's, that's his family. So I, I would say just leave it as is.
Leave it as is, and here's why. Because as long as the owner is in that unit, it's there, at their discretion who they want in their own household, and it is gonna be limited by the number of bedrooms and everything else.
That, that's correct. We're not actually limiting who else can live there, so long as the business owner lives there. So it could be their third cousin or an unrelated, we don't care.
It shouldn't even matter, because then you start getting into stuff that, yeah, you know, are you showing bias that you're calling something a family once, no, it's, it's a mess right now. Inhabited by the owner, that's it. Is there gonna be a limitation on--
What does it--
--all of that other stuff? Go ahead, sorry.
I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the, that section in front of me. What is, what does it read now?
It says, the residential portion of the unit must be inhabited by the owner or employee or an employee of the associated business.
No, no, the employee was struck.
Oh, we struck that.
I can't see that, okay, you're right.
Yeah, so it just says, the residential portion of the unit must be inhabited by the owner of the associated business.
Need to do a thicker strikeout, I'm like--
You're so good.
So it doesn't refer to family now?
No.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
And we're fine with the way it is, yeah.
I did have one point of clarification when the stairs wall issue was brought up. Because we do require access between the two units, I see there would be nothing precluding them from having stairs to the second floor going up from the business. In fact, I guess they would need it if it's on the second floor, so there could not be a wall dividing the business from that.
I think they were talking about just, what do you call, like a lockable door going up to the residential portion. All residential features must be designed and arranged to be separated from the business portion of the unit by a physical divider, such as walls and a lockable door. So in essence, that door locks and you go up to the residential unit, which would be the most common thing.
Okay.
Plus, you'd still have entrances, that we're not limiting the entrances behind sides or whatever. Okay, so are you clear on those minor changes?
Yeah.
Anything else? So, at this point, do we, would it be, outside of those changes, John, should we make the motion with those changes? So should I call for, make a motion to recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendments to 1704, 1720, and 1728, based upon those modifications? And if we can read those modifications back, I'm ready to introduce that?
You can do it that way, or you can make a motion to amend, to amend the draft. Yeah, I'm not sure what else I'm gonna get back here. Or you can make a motion to amend the draft, and then pass that, and then make a motion to pass the draft as amended.
Okay.
But it's, it's up to you, whichever way's gonna be cleaner for you.
Okay, I think that, that accomplishes, that we acknowledge the fact that we're changing it with those modifications, people approve it, and then go to make the motion to recommend to the city council. So at this point, would someone like to make a motion to amend the draft with the following changes?
Changing the definition.
Which one? Yeah, let's be specific, we're in the specificity business, I get it.
So, under, where it says, work-live unit means a business in which a residential use is located above a business use within the same building and is reserved for and regularly used by the owner. The primary intent of a work-live unit is to provide a working business space for the owner with a residence as a secondary use. These units are subject to the following conditions. We're changing that to specify, that work-live unit means a bus, a unit in which a residential use is located above a business use within the same building and is reserved for and regularly used by the business owner. The primary intent of a work-live unit is to provide a working business space for the business owner with a residence as a secondary use. These units are subject to the following conditions. Then, condition number two, changing, the business portion of the unit shall not exceed 50% of the area of the entire work-live unit, to read, the residential portion of the unit shall not exceed 50% of the area of the entire work-live unit. And changing condition number five, from access shall be provided to the residential portion of the work-live unit through the business portion. This condition is not intended to place a limit of one means of ingress/egress between the business and the residential portions of the unit. Multiple means of such ingress/egress may be incorporated, to read, access shall be provided to the residential portion of the work-live unit through the business portion. This condition does not preclude additional means of ingress/egress.
Right, cool.
Changing condition eight, from the minimum size of the residential port, or, sorry, the minimum size of the business portion of the unit shall not be less than 300 square feet, to read, the minimum size of the residential portion of the unit shall not be less than 300 square feet. Changing condition nine, from the maximum size of the business portion of the unit shall not exceed 1,500 square feet, to read, the maximum size of the residential portion of the unit shall not exceed 1,500 square feet. To read, the maximum size of the residential portion of the unit shall not exceed 1,500 square feet.
Can we go back to number eight? I don't, I don't remember us saying to, to getting rid of the minimum size of the commercial. That, that, that was, that's an important one, to have the minimum size of the commercial spelled out.
Yeah, I don't think we needed--
Was that the finding commission discussed?
Yeah, it was more the residential size that we wanted to limit at 1,500 square feet, so on number eight, I think, I think eight is fine as, as we read it.
Okay.
I don't remember the planning commission discussing that, so I apologize if that is something that you discussed today.
It's fair to bring up anything right now, let's get this right.
I, I just don't recall any change to number eight being suggested.
I may have misheard, so--
No, we were talking about the square footage and things, no, that's fine.
Do we need to change it from business to residential, or leave it as is?
I think we leave it as is, myself, but anybody else? The 300 square foot, that's even smaller than a stadia.
I agree, there's no reason to limit the residential minimum, because we're worried about the maximum for that.
Right.
But worried about squashing the business into a minimum. That's very small.
If we're into square feet as a decent-sized office for, believe it or not, an accounting firm or a professional services firm, and they'd still have the ability to go 1,500 square feet, and again, this is the industrial zone we're talking about, so. And I believe that was it.
We also struck--
So, so we're not changing, we're not changing eight?
We're not changing--
And we are, and we are changing nine, nine to change from business to--
Residential, yes.
And that's addressing the 1,500 square foot minimum.
Do I need to start again?
No, you're good.
No, but I don't believe we read nine yet.
Okay.
Or did we?
Okay. We'll continue. We are leaving number eight, condition number eight as is. Changing condition number nine, from the maximum size of the business portion of the unit shall not exceed 1,500 square feet, to read, the maximum size of the residential portion of the unit shall not exceed 1,500 square feet. And the last change is striking condition number 12, to remove the bit on garages.
So, at this point, would someone like to make a motion to amend the draft with the following changes, just right into the record by Assistant Planner McGowan?
Aye, so move.
Okay, we have a first by Commissioner Freiberger, do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor to amend the jet, the draft, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All approved? Any further, I'm, any, any further discuss, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead here. Is there any further discussion before I call for that vote? I apologize. No further discussion? Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Regarding number eight, left as is, this is just a clarification for my little brain here. If you want a 300-square-foot business, how big will your house be?
Maximum 1,500 square feet.
But what about the 50% thing?
Oh, okay, well, no.
Does that mean you have a 300-square-foot house, too? If that's what you want, that's fine, but that, you don't wanna bring that up after we vote.
You know, it's gonna be up to the, to a developer to decide what they wanna do, but you're right, that would be really small, so it doesn't make any economic sense.
Fucking A! What was that?
I don't know.
Somebody sneezed.
So say that again, how, how you're looking at that calculation?
Okay, number eight says, the minimum size of a business can be 300 square feet.
Right.
Okay, that's fine. Now go up to number two. As the amendment says, the residential portion of the unit shall not exceed 50% of the area of the entire work-live unit.
Well, we could change it back to business, would that fix it?
Well, I just, I'm just, I'm getting tired, I just wanna make sure everyone's clear at what we got.
No, it's--
No, no, no.
It's a very, it's a very good catch, Commissioner Fornetta.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Though it would, yeah, it would limit them to 300, and the residential portion. It's very strange.
So perhaps that's why we had it, number two saying business portion 50%, because then it works better.
Yeah, than the residential--
And it does, the thing was to restrict that, that residential component not to exceed the 1,500, so, so, yeah, great catch, absolutely.
I thought, I thought that's why number eight had to go with it, but--
Yeah, yeah.
So is the fix to just leave number two alone?
Yes.
Yes.
That's why we get a bunch of people in the room to look these things over.
That was a great catch, seriously.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we only change number nine when it comes to--
Correct.
Okay.
And now, we can go ahead and take a vote. I'm sorry?
Maybe, maybe we, maybe we should have Nicole give us a roundup of what is actually--
Start, start all over. Starting at number two.
Maybe not read what it's being from, but just read the amended as, as the new ones are going to read and which ones are gonna be stricken.
Okay.
And then we'll mark this time on, on the minutes, 7:34 PM, so we know to go back about now to look for this when we're typing it up.
Yeah.
Okay. Changing the definition of work-live unit, to read, oh, from, work-live unit means a unit in which a residential use is located above a business use within the same building and is reserved for and regularly used by the owner. The primary intent of a work-live unit is to provide a working business space for the owner with a residence as a secondary use. These units are subject to the following conditions. To read, work-live unit means a unit in which a residential use is located above a business use within the same building and is reserved for and regularly used by the business owner. The primary intent of a work-live unit is to provide a working business space for the business owner with a residence as a secondary use. These units are subject to the following conditions. Changing condition five, from access shall be provided to the residential portion of the work-live unit through the business portion. This condition is not intended to place a limit of one means of ingress/egress between the business and the residential portions of the unit. Multiple means of such ingress/egress may be incorporated, to read, access shall be provided to the residential portion of the work-live unit through the business portion. This condition does not preclude additional means of ingress/egress. Changing condition nine, from the maximum size of the resi, business portion of the unit shall not exceed 1,500 square feet, to read, the maximum size of the residential portion of the unit shall not exceed 1,500 square feet. And the last change is striking condition number 12.
Thank you. So at this point, start over again, would someone like to make a motion to modify the draft to the last following items, just right into the record? First, second? Gonna do it again?
Aye, so move.
Okay, second?
I second.
Okay. Do we have any further destruct, discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Not opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next motion, to make a motion to recommend that the city council approved the proposed amendments to chapter 17 dot 04, 17 dot 20, and 17 dot 28, reflecting the changes to the draft that was just approved. Do we have a first?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson first, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second--
I second.
From Commissioner Fornette, do we have any further discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay. At this point, we'll move on through our, I'm sorry, through our agenda. And we have next, unfinished business, none on the agenda. John, do you have anything you want to add into that, or we're just gonna leave none on the agenda?
Others, no, no unfinished business.
Okay, any new business? When, when are we gonna get on to the, didn't we have some comp plan changes that we had slated for this year?
We can discuss that under Planning Commission Discussion and Information Items.
Okay, right on, okay. So moving on to Planning Discussion Information Items, you have the floor.
I understand the planning commission's curious what's going on with the, the comp plan changes. So we plan to have a first read of those at the next planning commission meeting, and then a public hearing at the following. So the next planning commission meeting will be in April, the public hearing at the May Planning Commission meeting. And it's just two rezones.
Are we gonna?
That is it.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That, that, that's it, as far as that goes.
Yeah, at that time, we're gonna get a little bit more, more clarification from what made it through the House and Senate. And there were some really big items regarding housing, specifically the last thing I caught about, what, three weeks ago, was the House bill, I think it was 1101 or whatever it was, talking about that there are no single-family zones allowed in this state of Washington anymore for a population of 25,000 and above, that now duplexes, quads are now going to be permitted. And the state had all these guidelines, write down the setbacks and, and everything else that were defined in that. And I never saw what happened when it hit the Senate.
So, all of those, all of those middle housing and ADU project, legislative proposals have changed significantly.
Shocker.
And they tend to make major changes, like after, after a hearing. So it seems like it's going one direction, and the next thing you know, something pops up and it's totally different. So they are making the sausage, so to say. They're probably will, from what I understand from AWC, it sounds like they probably will be passing something. AD, AWC and other city interests have managed to work with the legislators to make the changes more palatable for cities, meaning, you know, giving cities more authority over what, what the rules say. So some local guidance can be allowed. So we'll see where it turns up, you know, they change drastically the other direction in, in the opposite House or Senate. So we're just, we're just in a waiting pattern, that's how these things go, they, they change a lot and move fast sometimes.
I thought it was interesting.
But maybe by the next planning commission meeting, we'll have some clarity on if any of those pass.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting they attached it to a population of a city. I mean, how would that apply to unincorporated areas and things like that? But that's, we'll, we'll see what comes out of the, what comes out in the butcher shop at the end of the day. So is there any other items, information items, that anyone would like to discuss? I have none on the agenda. Okay, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, someone?
I move, we adjourn.
Okay.
I second.
And a second from Commissioner Cox, do we have any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Planning Commission meeting of 3/21/2023 will be closed at 7:41 PM, and thank you, everyone, good job.
Have a nice night.
Thank you, Bill, you can stop recording. Good catch.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't write it down for the first time.